All right, good evening. It's Thursday, March 18th, 2021. It's 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call us to order for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Jefferson County Commission. Commissioner Tab, do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. The first order of business is to approve minutes. First is February 18th, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll move second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next is approval of the minutes for the March 4th, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll move second.
All right, I think we got a second in there. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Next is approval of requisitions for March 18th, 2021.
I'll move approval of requisitions for March 18th, 2021, in the total amount of $8,117.72.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Next is approval of accounts payable for March 11th, 2021. And I'll move that in the amount of $3,278,111.21.
Thank you.
Just to... Any discussion? Just to note that there's $3 million of that is to the Sheriff's Department. So that's why the number is so large. I'm not quite sure what that would be, but that's probably, Stephanie?
Cars.
I think it's an impact fee. It might be cars or it might be an impact fee transfer.
It has...
Capital Outlay Fund transfer.
Oh, okay.
All right, thanks, Michelle. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Next is approval of accounts payable for March 18th, 2021. And I'll move that too in the amount of $272,593.33.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next is approval of manual checks for March 12th, 2021.
I'll move approval of manual checks for March 12th, 2021. Total amount, $73,153.89.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Next is approval of manual checks for March 19th, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $134,793.74. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, next, approval of payroll for March 4th, 2021.
I'll move approval of payroll for March 4th, 2021. Total amount, $280,406.4.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Are there any announcements, Stephanie?
I do have one announcement. The appointment number six, at 7:30 tonight, Ms. Ditto decided to withdraw that request, so she will not be appearing before you this evening.
Anything further, or just that?
That's all I have.
All right, so we'll move to public comment. Do we have any public comments? I know we received some written comments that commissioners received. Are there any verbal public comments?
If there's anyone who would like to make public comment, you can use the raise your hand icon, or you can send me a message, and I will unmute you, and you'll be able to make your public comment for your allotted three minutes. So if you're interested, just use the raise your hand icon, and I will unmute you. It looks like we do. We have Ms. Stroud, Ms. Amanda Stroud. And Ms. Stroud, you just need to unmute yourself, and you should be good to go.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Amanda Stroud, and I'm a resident of Ranson. First, I would like to thank the county commissioners for keeping the library budget flat again this year. I was worried there for a second. Second, I'm here to talk about libraries, as well as ongoing complaints regarding services to those on the mountain. Therefore, I'd like to reintroduce you to the Mountain Community Center Library, which serves Shenondale and neighboring communities. This is not just a small room with a few children's books and a couple of chairs. This is a full-fledged library, and I should know. Currently run by the hard-working and creatively... and Creative Kimberly, whose last name I'm gonna spell because I can't pronounce it, which is K-A-R-P-F, which over the last 11 years has offered everything from various children's programming to free Wi-Fi and public computers for those on the mountain. In the spring of 2020, thanks to Kimberly and community volunteers, the children's library received a full makeover, and more importantly, over 2,500 items in the children's literature collection were digitized so that users could access an online catalog. This allowed the library to offer contactless pickups of library material during the pandemic. The adult library is slated to receive a similar upgrade over the spring and summer of this year. Now, why do I bring this up? Money, complaints, and goal 23, subsection 2 of Jefferson's 2035 Comprehensive Plan, specifically identify ways to improve library services on the Blue Ridge Mountain. The Mountain Community Center Library is a ready-made solution for this goal, and if properly funded, may even cut down on the number of lack-of-service complaints. The library is grateful for the $2,500 donation the commission gave in 2010, but I am requesting that henceforth they be added to the library funding plot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't see anyone else who has raised their hand. Let me just... Right here. Nope, Ms. Stroud was the only one.
Okay, so we'll move on to the regular agenda. Actually, I guess we have to hold off on number one because it's a public hearing. Michelle, are you prepared to do your stuff right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to number two. Michelle Gordon, Finance Director, review and approval of the four-year 21-22 draft budget.
Okay. Before I start on that, I did want to give you an update on the fiscal year 20 audit. The auditors are currently on-site performing the audit for the county. However, we did receive notification earlier this week that Parks and Rec will not be able to complete their audit by March 31st, and they've requested an extension through April 30th. I did confirm with our auditors that it should not affect our audit opinion. They were late last year due to the COVID pandemic, and they are probably going to be late this year. Let's see, the reason they're late this year has a lot to do with scheduling that revolves around the pandemic as well. So just wanted to give you an update on that. For the fiscal year 22 budget, we have spent the last couple of... the last month, the last five or six weeks reviewing the requests from departments that totaled 28.6 million, and we made about 22.6 million in cuts to come up with a draft budget for operating expenditures of 25.6 million. I do have one amendment I would like to add to this that wasn't included in the packet. I originally included the in-kind contribution that the county makes to the fire departments under the fire line item. However, that in-kind contribution is actually for ambulance services. So although we still make it to the fire departments, I believe it would be better represented under line 715 instead of 713. So the net effect on the bottom line is no change. However, I'm going to move... I would like to move 920,000 out of fire line and move that back down to the ambulance line item. The changes that we made during the budget process included cuts of positions, the merit increase, the COLA. We cut the HR generalist position. We reduced travel by 75% across the board. We... Let's see, other major ones. We cut... We transferred the GIS department from engineering to the IT department. And we transferred five positions that were formerly grant-funded from the Sheriff's Department to their respective grant funds. We also did not approve the sheriff's request for three new positions. In Department 712 Communications, we cut the CAD Administrator position. We cut the fire department contributions to 70,000 per fire department, so that was a cut of 175,000. ESA, we cut four of the seven new employee requests, so that we've kept three positions in there. Animal Control, we did not approve their new position request. Central Garage, we also did not approve their position request. The Health Department did not have their increase request for contact tracing, as well as an additional nurse. Parks and Rec, we cut them by 185,000 to get them back to their prior year level. Jefferson County Ministry, we cut that to 20,000 and moved that to the Cole Severance Fund.
Michelle, quickly, just Parks and Rec thing, we did not cut them that much. We had gave them a one-time contribution that is not normal, so we're not actually cutting them. So I want the public to be aware that we are not cutting Parks and Rec. Just based upon what occurred last year, it's not going to occur this year because that was a one-time contribution.
Correct. So their request included that one time contribution in error. So they asked us to actually make that $185,000 cut. We didn't make that through the commission cuts. Additional cuts included cuts to the federal grant revenue to reflect that we had three grant positions that are no longer grant-funded, and that we were moving the... the other three grant positions that are still grant-funded to other funds. So the revenues that were related to those, which are the Boulevard contract and our PRO grant match, those are being moved to other funds. I also increased tax revenue by about $30,000 based on the assessor's certificate of valuation that was just recently completed. For the Cole Severance Fund, I included the increases that we had for the community center and senior citizens, as well as CASA. That leaves us about 207,000 for fiscal year 22. The certificate of valuation was prepared by the assessor and certified by the clerk of the county commission on February 25th, 2021. In your packet, all of that information is included, as well as the levy estimate for fiscal year 22, prepared in the required format by the state auditor's office. It shows that we have a balanced budget with 30.862,849 in total revenues and total expenditures. It's a little confusing in that the state requires us to put our fund balance in as revenues and our ending fund balance in there as an expenditure. So when we were going through the budget, I put that down at the bottom, and we looked at just operating expenditures all by themselves.
Michelle, do... I guess, Stephanie, do we need a formal motion to allow her to reclassify the ambulance and fire accounts, or can she do that herself?
What you would... I was gonna say, what you would want to do is, the motion that I included in there, you could just say "as amended" at the end of it.
That's fine.
Any questions about the levy estimate that's presented? I do need approval of that so that I can submit it to the state auditor's office by March 28th. I also need to have it published in the local paper.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve the release of the four-year 21-22 draft levy estimate as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Tab?
Yes, I would like to offer an amendment to the main motion that for the fiscal year, COLA and merit increase of 270,000... 270K be approved contingent upon receipt of the first American Rescue Plan payment and final guidance that hopefully will allow us to use it for such a purpose.
So I guess, from my standpoint, I don't even know if we can use it for that purpose. Isn't that... that's a long-term, ongoing expense going forward, correct, Michelle? I mean, do we have guidelines as to what's going on with that yet?
I stated my amendment contingent upon approval. We can use it that way. That's why I meant...
Is there a second to that amendment? The amendment dies.
Well, I'm very disappointed because until we get our health insurance figures, we may be actually decreasing our employee salary overall. And additionally, I know many people are out of work, but some of our employees are the sole wage owner in their families. So we have folks that, you know, I believe a COLA is necessary to keep up with salary, general salary increases nationwide. I've seen us get behind on that, and I certainly feel during these challenges times that most employees deserve a merit increase.
Okay, so Commissioner Tab, just one thing on that. I think we already talked about the insurance increases. I think everybody collectively agreed that the employees would not bear any burden of that cost. So to that point, that has been addressed. To the other point, I... I think you're going for that too, if I'm wrong or not, but I believe we all agree to that. The second point is, I'm more than happy to look at that COLA when we know exactly how these funds can be used. So I don't think that is out of the question either. I just think for this motion, we need to approve the draft levy estimate, so Michelle can do that. Once we get more clarification on these funds, I'm more than happy to look at that option. I don't know how everybody else feels, but...
No, I do agree with our chairman on that. I think I would much rather see the funds and then obviously the guidelines for those funds before we air-tag anything right now.
Well, I understand that. I do, but I just want to put it on the table so it's not forgotten.
It won't be forgotten. I promise you, once we have clarification, that will go on there if they can be used for that. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, motion passes. Thank you for all your work during the budget, Michelle, and everybody else.
Okay, I still have a couple of other things here. So just to touch on what Commissioner Tab had talked about, preliminary information that I have regarding the American Rescue Plan grant is that the county should receive about 11.1 million. Prelimarily, I've been told that all counties will receive about half of that amount within 60 days, and the remainder of that should be received about a year later. Prelimarily, the preliminary guidance that I've received indicates that it can be used for COVID-19-related expenditures, as well as the lost revenue that we've experienced as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm not sure how far back it'll go. I'm hoping it will go back to March 1st, 2020, which was the beginning of the pandemic. So that funding that we receive for that lost revenue should hopefully bridge the gap for the county to help those revenues that were negatively impacted until they return to a normal trend. And the revenues that we have that have been impacted by that have been the gaming revenue for gambling and table games and video lottery revenue, our hotel occupancy tax revenues, and other revenue that was negatively impacted. Horse and dog racing, it's a very small revenue, but it was negatively impacted. And I would imagine that if we did some trend analysis, we could potentially see that tax revenue was negatively impacted as market values dropped, as people started losing their jobs, as people... as foreclosures started happening, we may see that tax revenue is impacted as market values start to decrease. I haven't received any official guidance, but as soon as I do, I'll make sure that I keep you updated on all of that information and so that we're aware of what's going on with the American Relief funding. Okay, the next item that I have on the agenda would be to review the fiscal year 21 financials as of February 28th, 2021. As of February 28th, we would expect to see expenditures and revenues at at least 67% of our total budgeted revenue for fiscal year 21. Ad valorem taxes are... nothing remarkable there. It's pretty normal for us to be at almost 100% at this time of year, with the second half of the taxes being collected in January and February. When you look at the total taxes collected of 12.2 million, it's pretty flat when you compare it to the same time last year of 12.3 million. Horse and dog racing has an error in one of the receipts. So although it shows that it's 35,000, it actually is only 3,400. I did have the clerk's office make that journal entry to correct that. The 32,000 was applied incorrectly to horse and dog racing. It should have been table games. So that will be corrected on the next revenue... financial statement. The property transfer tax is at 892,000. It's at about 88%. We've seen an influx of property transfers, property sales, real estate as a result of the pandemic. I guess it's... I'm not sure if it's a result of the pandemic or anything, because of the stimulus that people are receiving, they have some extra cash. So that is a little higher than we were expecting, so we may need to do a budget revision for that by the end of the fiscal year. I'll have a better idea. Table games revenue and video lottery revenue, I'll go over at the end. Our wine and liquor tax, so far, we've received 238,000. That's been the wild card for the last couple of fiscal years. It's trending much higher than I had originally anticipated. We've only received three quarters so far. So far, I still have one more quarter of about 70,000 to 80,000 to receive, so I'll need a budget revision for that revenue as well. For expenditures by department, the county clerk elections is at 73.5%. That's a result of the November election. They had some one-time expenditures happen early in the fiscal year. I don't expect them to be over budget. Our regional development authority is at 100%. That's a bill that we pay once a year, and it's already expended. There will be no more expenditures for that. Our fire department has our in-kind contributions. I will also do a journal entry to move that down to the ambulance line item, but that's the reason that that line item is trending so much higher. For the ambulance authority and libraries, those allocations are paid on a quarterly basis, so it makes sense that they're both at 75%. They'll be at 100% by the end of the year. Transfers to the Capital Outlay Fund, I've already made one transfer of $500,000 to the Capital Outlay Fund, and you approved the second transfer tonight of $3 million from the general fund to the Capital Outlay Fund. I'll do the final transfer in May, once I'm sure that we have enough funds in our fund balance to sustain operations in the event that we have any additional revenue loss as a result of the pandemic. However, things are starting to open up, and I'm feeling pretty good about not needing any additional funds in our fund balance, which is why I started doing our transfers. When we look at our expenditures by object, we had our normal things pop up. Insurance and bonds are at 88%. Those are for our risk and liability, as well as our workers' comp. Workers' comp is paid on a quarterly basis, and our risk and liability is actually paid in two half-year installments, so it is fully paid for. So it makes sense that they would be at 90%. We have one more quarterly payment to make for our workers' comp. Court costs and damages, we don't normally budget for that, and I make budget revisions for those as they pop up during the year. Those are typically for unexpected insurance deductibles, and they are typically pretty big, and they usually relate to cases from several years ago. So we don't really know when they're gonna pop up. I didn't see anything else unusual when I looked at it by object. Do I have any questions about the financials there? Okay, I also included expenditures by statutory obligation for your information. I wanted to go over table games revenue with you. Table games revenue, so far, we've received $282,000 compared to 420,000 at the same time last year. Last year before the pandemic hit, we were trending significantly higher than we had in previous years, and it's actually probably going to be the second year that we had trended upward for table games revenue. I don't anticipate that we'll need a budget revision for the end of the year, although my trend is predicting that we'll be at a loss of 71,000. That trend is based on, you know, the COVID-19 closures that happened last year. So I believe we'll be okay, especially now that everything is open. I'll look at it again in May, and if a budget revision's needed, I'll bring it back to you. We have already decreased that budget. We had originally budgeted 564,000, and we already decreased it by 85,000. And if you look at the graphs at the bottom, it's just striking to me how we have those two dips down to $0, and that's something we've never seen before. Video lottery revenue is very similar to table games. We received so far this fiscal year 1.8 million. Let's compare it to 2.2 million at the same time last year, and COVID really didn't kick in until March. So our trend last year for video lottery game revenue was also trending much higher than it had in previous years. And I think video lottery revenue last year probably would have been the first year that we had seen an increase in the revenue, but unfortunately, it didn't happen because of the pandemic. So we do have a 16.7% decrease when compared to the same time last year. We've already decreased that revenue prediction by 520,000, and we've absorbed that within the general fund budget. We have a budget for fiscal year 22 of 2.1 million, and I don't anticipate needing to revise that until we get into fiscal year 22 and see how things are recovering. Any questions about the financial statement?
Michelle, we may have to jump to the public hearing, cut back to you, because... So let's just hang out for a second because it's almost time for the public hearing. Is there anything we can knock out in three minutes, Stephanie? I don't know, man. I'm trying to keep this meeting pretty tight. I know it's an evening meeting, so...
I can give you a few quick legislative updates. Senate Bill 12 passed through everything, and the governor signed that bill into law. Senate Bill 270, which is the Airbnb, the hotel occupancy tax for Airbnb, that passed, and the governor also signed that into law today. Senate Bill 89, which is something that we had specifically requested to exempt Parks and Recreation programs from the childcare requirements of DHHR. That passed through all the legislation bodies, and it's headed to the governor for signature, and hopefully... And that'll be really helpful to Parks and Rec and allow them... and also to the citizens who use that for summer childcare. SGR 9, which... well, that's probably gonna take a little bit later. The bill that I told you about regarding the racetrack, which it was introduced by someone from the northern, a delegate from the northern Panhandle, and I think he introduces it every year. That hasn't moved. It's still sitting there. It usually doesn't get any traction, but I'm keeping my eye on it because it would impact the funding that we receive from gambling revenue if they begin splitting it equally amongst municipalities immediately, instead of letting the county take the first million. The bills... there are various bills allowing or providing that municipalities would pay for their inmates, or at least a portion of their inmates. As far as I can tell, none of those bills have moved from their committee assignments or their committee references.
All righty. Yeah, I just... I started right now, but still 28 afters.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to take a breather for a second.
I don't think there's... I do want to talk about SGR 9, but I think it'll take me more than two minutes to go.
I've got a minute now, so I don't even try.
I talk fast, but not that fast.
Mr. Chairman, on this next agenda item, public hearing, I do have to recuse myself for a conflict adventure, a potential conflict adventure, so I will not be participating in that.
That's fine. If you want, just mute yourself and shut your camera off for that section.
And if... just about the next agenda item, we have both Mr. Wallen here, who is the applicant, who's appearing on behalf of the applicant, and he can answer, make a short presentation if you want him to. And we also have Jenny Brockman here, and she can make a presentation that she made to the planning commission if you're interested in hearing either of those.
I mean, it's a... I've heard in a hearing a summarized version of that. I don't know if the other commissioners want... I don't know about a long, drawn presentation, but maybe just the street facts around this.
Okay.
I mean, all right, so now it's 6:30. Agenda item number one, public hearing. I mean, alright, so now it's it's 6:30, agenda item number one, public hearing for zoning map amendment, rezoning for property designated tax district Charlestown 02. Map 16 parcel one, the property is located northeast of Augustine Avenue and Route 340 intersection in Charlestown, West Virginia. So does Miss Brockman want to initially start and just give us a rundown?
I can do that or the applicant can do that.
However, you like, an applicant can do that if that's okay too.
Is Chad available?
He is, he's on.
Yes.
So Chad, feel free to give us a quick rundown of what this is and what's going on here, if you don't mind.
Alright, this is a rezoning at the corner of 2.5 acres at the corner of Augustine Avenue and Route 340. It's proposed to be rezoned from rural to highway commercial. It was found consistent with the comprehensive plan by the planning commission at the last planning commission meeting. It is in within the urban growth boundary. Which makes it consistent. And that's the short of it. I think the packet explains it well. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have or address any comments.
Okay, so remember this is a public hearing, so we need to open it up to any public comments. So at this point in time, I'll open it up to public comments. Stephanie, I don't know if anybody's online that wishes to comment on this.
If there's anyone, we'll use the same process that we use for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. If there's anyone who wants to provide testimony at this public hearing, use the raise your hand icon or you can send me a message and I will unmute you. Okay, it looks like Amanda Stroud would like to, I don't know if that, I thought I put her hand hand down, so she must be want to make a comment for this. Was Stroud yourself muted? Well, now it says I muted you, sorry. So you just have to unmute yourself, Ms. Stroud.
There we go. I'm I'm sorry. My apologies. I just thought while I'm here, I'll ask a question. What the heck? Um, is the sheets going to be about the same size as the sheets by Tractor Supply? Just out of curiosity, is it going to be about approximately the same size? Anybody?
As a public hearing, we can't really respond here.
Oh, that's right. I forget. You guys can answer questions. Okay, nevermind.
If he chooses to do so, make a comment after the hearing explodes, if he would be like.
Hey, I forgot. My apologies.
Yeah, no problem. We'll see if Mr. Wallen can address that after the fact. Any other public comment?
I'm all for it, by the way.
Okay.
Okay, I do not see anyone else who looks like they want to make public comments. No hands raised, no messages. Oh, I'm sorry. Richard Ziegler. Mr. Ziegler, you just need to unmute yourself. Mr. Ziegler? It says that you are muted. Oh.
Sir, are you there?
Sometimes people inadvertently raise their hand.
Maybe. So is there anybody else? And maybe we can move back to Mr. Ziegler.
We do not have anyone else.
Okay, was it, was there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Wallen or Ms. Brockman?
No.
To clarify.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. To clarify the comment received, it is a similar in size of 6,100 square foot building.
Okay, so just if there's no further public comment, so it has come to my attention that we generally have left public comment open for two weeks. I was under the assumption that was dictated by West Virginia state code. But what I've been told that is not the case. So that I was trying to figure that out when other bodies have acted at public hearings and not done that. I was always under the assumption that was what we were required to do by law. I guess a former commissioner instituted that with no formal vote of the commission.
Yeah, I think it was the consensus of the commission to do it. And then we've just done it ever since, but it's not required by law. And I checked our policies and it's not in our policies either.
So I mean.
It's not in our policies.
No.
With that being said, I, I mean, if we want to update the policies, maybe we should do that, have a discussion of that. But we have just been operating on a whim at these public hearings. So I'm going to move that we approve the rezoning request after taking public comment during this hearing. And allow the rezoning of the property designated tax district Charlestown 02 map 16 parcel one to be rezoned from, what is it? It's a rural to light commercial?
No, highway, highway commercial.
Highway commercial. So I meant it's a highway commercial. Is there a second time motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I I would normally vote for this, but I'm, I I think people have been, whether it's a policy or not, have been trained to know they have two weeks to comment. And I think with the virtual platform especially, it's important to continue that. So only for that reason would I be voting against your motion. I I support the rezoning, but I think we should leave it open for two weeks.
That's, that's fine. I just, we had a conversation about what's in our policies because it has not been in our policies for the four years that I've been on the commission. And I thought it was in West Virginia state law, we have to do that. Then I started noticing all the other elected boards were acting at their public hearings.
Well, and I'm just saying it's been our, you know, not a written policy, but that's the way we've been behaving. So that's the only reason I have concerns this time. So if we review your policies, that's fine. But for that, the reason I stated, I will be voting against the current motion on the table.
That's fine. I'll I'll put that on the agenda for next discussion. Any other further comment on this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one with one abstention or
Nay.
Commissioner Calliffe, are you back? Alright, thank you, Ms. Brockman. I appreciate the help.
And just to follow up on this project, my one concern, and I know it's not county's responsibility, is access because it's near the one traffic light where we have a lot of terrible accidents. Now, I know that's you know, a lot of that's up to DOH, but I don't know how we can impress upon them to do some good engineering to make that the safest possible intersection.
Yeah, I think the city of Charlestown is actively trying to figure that situation out also. And they have been for quite some time, but I don't disagree with you with Commissioner Tab. Alright, so we'll jump back to Michelle Gordon, Finance Director, four-year, 21 COVID-19 emergency financial policy.
Okay, so in fiscal year 20, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, financial, an emergency financial policy was implemented. The pandemic gave rise to nationwide business closures and county organizations experienced increased expenditures for public and employee safety. Implementation of reduced operating hours, reduced business capacity, as well as social distancing guidelines. Additionally, the county faced unprecedented revenue loss. On March 5th, 2021, the West Virginia governor signed Executive Order 8-21, relaxing COVID-19 restrictions on businesses, social gatherings and other youth travel sports. The order increased capacity limits for restaurants and bars to 100% of their seating capacity and 100% for small businesses, retail stores, grocery stores and other venues. Additionally, social gathering limits were increased from 75 to 100 people. The county's emergency financial policy was originally implemented in March of 2020 and it has been reviewed and extended on a quarterly basis since then. The most recent review was on 12/17/2020 and the emergency policy was extended through June 30th, 2021. I also indicated at that time, or the commission also indicated that at that time, they'd like me to come back for a review in March. The following cost-cutting measures were implemented. Part-time and underutilized staff were reduced, eliminated or utilized in other departments. Overtime was reduced through the use of compensatory time or flex time. Travel and training were deferred except for essential needs. Equipment materials and supplies were deferred except for essential needs. Contracted and professional services and capital outlay fund projects were also deferred except for essential needs. Vacant positions remained unfilled for six months, except for those that were in essential positions or where departments would be unable to maintain services. Departments have adhered to the emergency financial policy and based on the most recent or signed by the governor as well as the American relief plan that was most recently approved. Departments would like to know what, if any, of the county's emergency financial policy restrictions can be lifted earlier than June 30th, 2021, or potentially on April the 1st, 2021. So I will open that up to you for discussion at this point.
Okay, so I guess, do we want to continue this or not is essentially the question. What does everybody feel about this?
I think parts of it, we should continue and parts, I think we we've already relaxed the vacant positions, I think. So I think that's one. I'm in favor of lifting the equipment, material and supplies and the contracted and professional services and leaving the rest of the restrictions in with the capital outlay, part-time, overtime and travel and training.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that either. Anybody else on that?
I'm I'm pretty much in agreement. We we already relaxed, like Ms. Tab said, Commissioner Tab said, I think some of the vacant positions. Do we know how many have been on hold or haven't been filled?
We still have two positions that haven't been filled in the prosecutor's office. The position that we had in the commission's office has been eliminated, so we won't fill that. I know that engineering also has at least one vacancy that they have not got permission to fill as well.
Yeah, I think we could go ahead and fill this. I'm in agreement with the items that Commissioner Tab agreed to relax the restrictions on and keep the others.
Okay, so I just want to, can I, I just want to confirm. The parts that will be relaxed are vacant positions, equipment, materials, supplies, contracted and professional services. And we will leave in part-time and underutilized staff, overtime, travel and training and capital outlay funds as being deferred.
Yes.
Yeah.
Consensus on that, Stephanie? We don't need a formal.
I'll make a formal motion if you want. Well, I move that we amend the COVID-19 emergency financial policy and remove the restrictions on equipment, materials and supplies contracted in professional services and vacant positions and leave the four other categories in effect.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion passes. Next, we have revisions to policy 304 P-card procedures.
So this policy has been in place since 2010. It's our purchasing card policies and procedures. The state, we were notified in January 2021 that this West Virginia State Auditor's Office has made change, had made changes to the local government purchasing card policies and procedures in September of 2020 to comply with legislative rule 155 CSR 6. As a result, we were required to revise our existing policies and procedures manual. All cardholders will receive a copy of the revised manual. Summary of the West Virginia State Auditor's Office required revisions include adding language to state that it is governed by legislative rule 155 CSR 6. We added language requiring the chief financial officer's oversight. Section was added for convenience fees and surcharges policy to make that a little more clear for departments. A section was added referencing the county travel policy. And stronger language was added regarding remedial actions for fraud and misuse. And that stronger language included that an employee who has fraudulently or misused their card could potent, could face potential criminal action as well as disciplinary actions up to and including termination of employment. Other revisions that I made really were to just update language on procedures that are now taking place in our, the county's new automated financial system. I could go over each one of those revisions for you. I did provide you with a redline version. The state provided us with a new P-card policy that was really kind of reorganized in its entirety. So I provided you with our old policy as well as a new policy. And I referenced in the new policy where it would have taken you back to the old policy. So everything that was in our new old policy is contained in the new policy with those added six things. Do I have any questions about the revisions to the P-card policy or did you want me to go over it in more detail?
I mean, I went through it. I mean, I think you hit the biggest reasons as to why it changed and why the legislature did that. I mean, I don't need an in-depth detailed look. I've looked through it. Do any commissioners need more details on this? Okay, so in that case, I'm going to move we approve the county policy 304 P-card procedures as presented on March 18th, 2021. And they are effective March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Plus a doggy.
Yeah, they're, it's separate rooms barking at each other right now. So that's always fun.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for all your hard work. I know you've been hard at work at the health department too. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, is, we'll move to, we're a little early. Is Ms. Deborah Young on?
He is.
Okay, so this is agenda item number three, Deborah Young Victim Assistant Program approval and signing of the Voca grant application.
Debbie, it says that you're self-muted. Are you there?
There, Ms. Young?
It says she is unmuted now.
Alright.
Oh, there she is.
How are you doing, Ms. Young?
Yeah, you're muted.
I think you're still muted. You see that little box with the three circles on the top right?
Yeah, it says she's, I mean, I have her as not muted. Her little microphone is green. And now it doesn't have hers.
She can try. She can call in if it's not working for some reason. We can jump back to her. Do you want to try to call in, Ms. Young? You can just nod. Okay. We'll come back to you. Just just call into the meeting. Stephanie, can you help her figure out the call in and come back? No problem. Um. Is Russ on?
He is.
Hopefully the IT person can, uh. If not, we have some other problems.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I just am here this evening to ask for your approval to replace our IT support help desk technician level one position. It's a position that you all approved to be advertised on January 7th of this year. For the position, we had 62 candidates apply for that. We narrowed that down to four candidates that we interviewed. We narrowed that down utilizing the two assessments that they were presented with that they were required to take for the position. One was a technical support assessment. The other was a technical support customer situations assessment. We looked at the resumes, obviously cover letters and letters of recommendation. Our candidate passed both assessments as being highly proficient. He has an associate's degree in applied science and information technology from Blue Ridge Community and Technical College. He has a bachelor of science from Shepherd University. He has a bachelor of science from Shepherd University in computer information technology. And he has interned at Blue Ridge Community and Technical College, setting up and configuring computers, applying network configurations and running the help desk for IT support tickets. One of the things that he did during the COVID issues, which during that time he had lost his position, he was laid off. He had been working at the Clarion in the fitness area. So during that time, he spent time studying and got both his CompTIA A+ certification and his CompTIA Network Plus certification. The CompTIA A+ certification is a certification that we require for the position that if they don't have it, they have to get it within the first year. Interviews with him went well. He's a well-spoken gentleman. Kind of quiet, but just seems to assess the situations that are coming up and then reply appropriately. I think honestly, he will work well in the information technology department. And this evening, I'm just asking for your approval to hire Mr. Spencer Frazier as of April 1st, 2021 at a starting salary of $35,000. And I think I put the motion in the agenda packet, but I didn't put a start date, but I think we would like to try April 1.
Well, I'll make.
I'm sorry. I was going to say nothing like started on April Fool's Day.
Well. Move to approve the IT department to hire the position of support help desk technician one at a salary of $35,000 per year as a full-time employee effective for a Mr. Spencer.
I'll second that motion.
What's going on?
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Have a pleasant evening.
All right.
Is Ms. Young available? Did we get that sorted out?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay. I don't know. Everything is working and everything's unmuted on my computer. I don't know. Anyway, this is my lawn. I'm Deborah Young. I'm the coordinator of the Victim Assistance Program located in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And I'm here today to request the approval of the commission and the signing of the grant application that I have prepared to, for the Victims of Crime Act. I think that Sandy has supplied you with three portions of the grant. They are the essential portions for your purposes for the budget. And do you have any questions about that?
I believe we approve this every year too, so.
Yes. Yes. And actually, the budget has not changed from last year. It is exactly the same. I'm not asking for any more money from the grant. And so it is essentially the same. It's the same amount of match that is required from the county commission, which, which is provided through our salaries.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Young, we have two new commissioners. Can you give them a quick rundown of what this is?
Yes. Yes. Victim Assistance Program operates through the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. We have assisted with, working with the victims of crime, essentially violent crimes and against the person. And we have been here for 21 years. Which I've been here for 20, going on 21 years. Yes. So, and in that period of time, what we do is we contact the victim as soon as we are notified of a criminal charge. And we explain to them the criminal justice system. And we essentially stay with the victim throughout the whole process of the prosecution of their case. And sometimes afterwards. We keep them notified of all the hearings. We keep them notified of plea negotiations. We also do referrals for counseling, referrals for financial assistance through the West Virginia Crime Victims Comp Fund. We provide crisis counseling. Only, and we work very closely with the other agencies in our, in our area such as Epic, which used to be the Shenandoah Women's Center. We also work very closely with Safe Haven, which is the Child Advocacy Center located in Martinsburg, of which we've been involved since their inception. So we work very closely with CPS, the Child Protective Services, through DHHR. So basically, we, we, we are served in many capacities for the victims. We also relay the victims' concerns with the prosecutors who don't have the time to really talk to the victims before they go into court. So we give them, we supply the prosecutors with a lot of information that they may not have otherwise. So that's essentially what we do. Last year, we, as part of the grant, we're supposed to serve 700 new victims every year, which we, we was way above that. We provided services for 742 new victims and 692 victims with, victims who had cases from previous years that were ongoing. And within those victims, we supplied about 5,021 types of services. That is telephone information, that is regarding their cases, the status of their cases, what's going on, questions. We do, we did 425 in-person information and referral services. We provided personal advocacy, which essentially involves contacting medical providers, working with them when there are medical bills that are involved that have to be dealt with. We deal with landlords with, just providing advocacy for the victims throughout the process. And we did about 1,400 personal acts of personal advocacy. We also did written contacts. We did 1,900 letters out to victims and notifications of hearings, writing letters on victims' behalf. So essentially, we, that's what we do. We, we work with the victims throughout the criminal justice system, giving them information and help in finding services that they might need throughout the process. So that's what we do.
Thank you, ma'am. It's a, it's a good thing they do. So that's basically, very good thing. So I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion that we approve. And I guess have the president affix his signature to the Voca Victims of Crime Act grant application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passes. So Ms. Young, did you leave that in the commission office with Sandy?
I did. I did. And there are, there are three portions which you have to sign. And I believe she has them marked for you. And if you want to leave it there, I can pick it up. I have to have it in Charleston by April 5th, so.
Okay, so I'll come in and sign that tomorrow. We'll have it to you at the latest Monday.
That would be great. That would be great.
Thanks a lot, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're a little early. Is, is Erin, is it Bajada? Bajada? I probably just butchered that on the second try, but I think I was right the first time.
I think she is here.
Okay. This is number five on the agenda. Request letter of support requested from Peace Ridge Gardens Co-op and Company, 501(c)(3) to apply for USDA rural development community facilities loan and grant. How are you doing, Erin?
Hi, I'm good. This little guy just woke up, so I think he'll be joining me for our meeting. That's okay.
No problem.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for meeting with me. Oh, yeah, it's okay. And I, yeah, I'm, I'm applying for the USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Loan to build a structure on my nonprofit farm. Did you all have an opportunity to look at the packet that I sent you in the emails? Okay, so you have a lot of background. Okay. The area specialist for the USDA RD Jeffrey Owens has asked me to get her letter of support from our county commission. Did you want me to go over the mission of my nonprofit?
I guess, I guess, what's the core function? You want to build a structure. That's what the money is essentially going to be for if you're approved. So I guess, quickly, what do you do as your nonprofit? That'd be helpful.
Yeah, so it's a startup. This will be our first year operating and. I'm sorry. And I've partnered with the Sacred Gardens School. So the main mission is to educate and empower future farmers and entrepreneurs through programming for both children and adults on the farm. They can learn about sustainable agriculture, gardening, nutrition, herbalism, cooking, DIY crafts and permaculture. On our farm, we'll have a 72-foot high tunnel that's being installed this year with year-round production of greens. We'll have a half-acre chef's garden, a one-acre pollinator's garden, a one-acre orchard and a one-acre perennial garden. And that's all this year, just to get it started. And everything can be expanded upon from there. We also have a seven-acre woodland for foraging and nature trails and a variety of animals. So people can learn about husbandry and, and children will be able to interact with them. I've been talking with the Board of Education and JCPS to supply our schools with fresh or frozen produce in the fall and winter and spring. And then to provide summer programming for our kids in the summer. And the, the structure that I want to build is pretty integral to the operation because we will need a classroom, we'll need shelter and restrooms. So that people can gather inside to learn and see presentations.
Right on. Hey, I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, so he'd be doing the same thing. So I'm not going to hold you here too long. So you're, you're not asking for any money, the commission. You're just asking for support. We think this is a good idea.
Yes, yes, exactly. It's, I'm applying for a loan through the USDA RD, and they just need a letter from our county commission saying that you support the mission of this nonprofit. You think that it would be an asset to our community.
Okay, so one quick question. Stephanie, there's a legal issue here with the commission supporting something like this tied to USDA loan or anything, right?
I don't think so. I think they're just looking for support. They're saying that the commission, you know, doesn't have any objection to the project. I don't see any legal issue.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, I have one. So when did you actually switch from an LLC to a 501(c)(3)?
Last year, I registered as a 501(c)(3).
Okay. And then I did notice, I've been exploring Peace Ridge Farms, and I noticed in December of 2020, you advertised an Airbnb coming soon. So I'm just trying to figure out the filing structure and the support, how that plays into a 501(c)(3).
Okay, the Airbnb is part of the LLC. So that's not, that's something that we've had established for five years, the Airbnb.
Okay, so you have two filing, business filings. You have a 501(c)(3) and an LLC still registered?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, yeah, they'll both be taking place in the same, on the same 40-acre property, but they'll be serving different functions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, that's where my cause for concern is, is actually the filing structure and the support around a nonprofit versus a business and LLC. But I guess that's up to the USDA to determine if you qualify for the grant or not.
Yeah, the barn won't be associated with the LLC.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Jackson?
I don't have any others. It looks like Commissioner Tab might have some questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tab.
Yes, my first question is how are you going to pay back this loan?
Through, through the programming.
So you're going to charge people to come to have all this programming?
Yes.
Are you going to pay for experts to come in and do the programming?
Yes.
Okay.
I can send you, would you like me to send you, I have a financial assessment that I've written up for the USDA that I can share with you guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about the payback and have you checked with planning and zoning? This sounds like a school or a commercial kitchen, and I want to make sure that it's even possible.
Yes, yes, I've spoken to, to them and they've given me approval for it.
Have you filed a, but you haven't filed a building permit yet, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right. Well, there might be some hoops to jump through there too, but it sounds very creative. I'm just concerned about the amount of funds you can generate profit margin on, on such an endeavor. So I would like to see the details.
But just my standpoint, I don't generally think a governmental body should dictate what financials a private business can or cannot do or proceed with. That's not our place here. If, if, she's a business owner, if she, this goes to the point of Jefferson County being so overbearing to new businesses trying to get off the ground. And so I have no desire to see any of those financials. She's obviously an existing business owner. If she thinks she can assume that risk, that is, should be left up to the individual business owner. So I mean, I'm actually prepared to make a motion to support this. I mean, it's, we should not be meddling in private businesses and risks. We're not funding any money here either, so I'm going to move we draft a letter from the county commission in support of our business to apply. I guess it's, what's the farm called again? It's.
Sacred Gardens Co-op and Company.
All right, so let me say this again. I move we approve a letter be sent from the county commission in support of Peace Ridge Gardens Co-op and Company to apply for the USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant and Loan. Any discussion?
I, I'm just going to vote against it because I think a letter of support, I believe implies that we feel there will be a way to pay back the money. And so that's my.
It's only, it's only $300 a month.
For how many years?
It's, it's a, it's a long loan. Yes. But low interest and long-term loan at $300 a month.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Interest at USDA is like under 2% maybe right now or something. This is like free money, actually. I mean, it would seem very smart to try to get that loan at that interest rate right now. So I mean, I commend you for taking the risk and trying to bring a new business to Jefferson County. I mean, this is what I've been talking about. Like, we're, we're being an impediment to new people, new businesses, trying to get off the ground here with these nonsense suggestions. So I mean, any further comment on? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 No.
Motion passes 401. Thank you, Erin. Good luck.
Guys, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. We don't, we're skipping number six. We're going to jump to number, and we're a little early. Is Mr. Shore on by chance?
I am not seeing him on here. Let me check the other list to make sure. Let me check the other list to make sure. I didn't see him. Miss who? Miss, Miss Huddle?
Kristy Huddle. I mean, we're, we're, here's some other stuff we can jump to. I just wanna make sure people aren't sitting on here waiting.
I don't see her either.
Okay, so let's jump to the number ten. Unfinished business. Set date and time for joint meeting for the Jefferson County Fire Association, ESA, and Jefferson County Commission. So I was gonna, there's a lot of people that are gonna be part of this. I think there has to be some sort of virtual option regardless of when this is held, just because of how many people are gonna be part of it. I know the fire association meets and all those folks are together at one point at the beginning of each month. I know the ESA meets at a specific point in time at one point at every month. Uh, I don't know how people want to do this, or, or how far you want to kick it out, or what. We're slowly opening up here. If there's a virtual option, I, I will do it any evening or whenever. If, if we all want to get together collectively in a big warehouse, we need to figure out when that's gonna be. Or we could do it on Steve's farm in, in the front yard. I mean,
That's an option. We, um, what if we meet at, at, at the social hall at Independent? I believe there's enough, I would believe there is, should be enough room for us to meet in social distance in that building.
Well, there, well, here's the thing, too. We need to contact the respective bodies, too. Okay, do you want to propose a date the county commission is available, or a few dates? I mean, we're almost-
I think we almost have to go with a few dates since we've got so many people involved, and try to narrow it down from there.
Or, I mean, I guess, have you reached out to any of these folks by chance, Stephanie, at all?
I have not.
Yeah, I, this is like, gonna be like herding cats a little bit, I think, unfortunately.
It's always like that when I'm trying to get multiple people in, in a meeting. So it's not, it's not unusual, um, you know, for me to try to schedule with different groups like this.
Commissioner, why don't we ask them for dates and, and a, why don't we ask them for dates first, and then we'll work around that, see when they're available?
Yeah, let, let's do that, if you don't mind. Stephanie, I also want to come to like a legitimate type of agenda here, rather than just shooting fire at works everywhere, trying to figure out what we're talking about. So are we gonna talk about ambulances? Are we gonna talk about fire? What are we, are we talking about number of ambulances, how we're funding ambulances and so forth? I, I think we need to have a, some sort of loose agenda, not just, let's go in and just talk about whatever for two hours.
And I think when we were doing it before, back in the fall, um, we were, I mean, we were developing an agenda for that. So we probably could just pull that out and maybe modify it for what we're gonna talk about now. Um, and I'll reach out to them. Is there, do you guys have any dates? You want it to be in the evening? Usually we start when we're doing fire rescue stuff, we start at seven. Um, is there, um, do you guys want to throw out a couple of dates, or you just want me to get dates from them?
I think that's probably easier. There's less of us, more of them.
Okay.
You guys fine with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you, uh, Stephanie. Uh, we're still a little early. Uh, new business. Let's jump to number twelve. Set date and time for public hearing. Repeal the county ATV ordinance and revert to existing state law. I'm just gonna propose we do that, public hearing at next in-person meeting, April, was it April first?
Yeah, I think.
Problem with that? Uh, what time? You want to do one-thirty, right after lunch? Uh, that, that's gonna be a long meeting, I think, so.
Remember, you also have your appeal from, uh, the impact fee decision. You're gonna have that, and that's probably gonna be a little bit longer than most of your appeals.
Why don't we do this at, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit, too.
Yeah.
What does everybody think? I forgot about that appeal.
Sorry. What about the eve, the evening meeting in April, which would be the fifteenth? It's a, I think the ATV thing would, um, attract a lot of citizens.
What if, does, is anybody opposed doing it in the evening the following week, rather than dragging things out?
That'd be for that.
I don't want to have a public hearing that's gonna be a long public hearing at an evening meeting. Can we do it like maybe, uh,
This meeting like following Thursday?
What about the, what about Tuesday, the twenty-third, virtual public hearing just for that? We can do it evening at six PM?
March twenty-third?
Yeah. Coming on March twenty-third? Am I out of my mind right now? Yo, I'm talking to the sixth. What about, well, six, six PM?
Yeah, that'll give us enough time to notice it, yeah.
Is that fine?
On a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And Commissioner Compton, I don't know what your plans are for this, but if you want, uh, my input on it, you might, should schedule it for a meeting and a public hearing, just, um, or if, if you want my input on it before you have a public hearing, or if, if you wanted to decide that day, uh, or if you want to put it off to another meeting to decide, that'd be fine. We could, we could talk about it later.
So you, you mean, notice it as a meeting and a public hearing for the ATV ordinance?
If you want to move forward that quickly, if you want to just have a public hearing on it, on a such-and-such a day, and then have, uh, another meeting concerning this issue afterwards, another day after that, that'd be great, too. It's however you want to move forward.
I mean, what does everybody think? I mean, I would like just to have a meeting and a public hearing on this. I'm not one to keep dragging things out. If, if the majority takes input and decides not to proceed, we don't need to drag it out for another month.
I, I agree.
I think we do it all at once.
I think previous commissions have just wasted a lot of time on issues that could have been resolved one way or the other in many, like, a few days versus a few weeks. There's a lot of issues we have to address at the county level, especially with all this money coming up, so.
Sure. Well, it's up to you. I, I'm just pointing out, if you want input from me, you might want to word the, uh, word the agenda notice so that we have a, a meeting and a public hearing.
Okay, so that, that's fine with me. It sounds like three of us agree. Commissioner Tab, Commissioner Hudson, is that okay with you all?
Yes.
So six PM meeting and public hearing for the ATV ordinance, April sixth. All right, uh, let's jump to thirteen. Approval of resolution authorizing participation in Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July first, 2021, to June thirtieth, 2022. I mean, this is, did we receive any further public comment on this?
We did not.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the resolution authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July one, 2021, to June thirtieth, 2022, and authorize the president to sign the necessary documents.
Second. Any discussion? All unfair of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Um, okay, let's jump to, uh, what time is it? Seven eighteen? Is, who is on by chance?
Aye.
Do not see him.
What did I miss? Kristy Hall? I didn't, I don't want these folks to have to sit here if they don't need to.
Nope, she's not on either. Let me, oh, let me check my, sometimes they're in the attendee list for whatever reason, so let me check there. No, neither one of them are on there.
All right, so we'll jump to number eleven. New, new business.
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna have to recuse myself for a con, potential conflict of interest on this item.
All right, Commissioner, please mute yourself and shut off the camera so we can talk about this. Um, and let the record reflect, Commissioner Stolper has recused himself on item number eleven. So this is a overview of the Planning Commission's recommendation for zoning ordinance text amendment ZTA nineteen dash oh-three. The draft amendment proposes to allow solar, solar energy facilities to process as a principal permitted use by right in the following zoning districts: general, commercial, highway, commercial, light industrial, major industrial, rural residential growth, residential light, industrial, commercial, and industrial commercial. The text amendment proposes revisions to Article Two definitions, Article Eight supplemental use regulations, creation of Section eight point two, solar energy facilities, and Appendix C, principal permitted and conditional uses table. That is a very long description. Uh, Commissioner Tab, you can read that next time.
Oh, thank you.
Alex, uh, what do you have for us here with this?
Um, well, so, um, just as a recap, um, on December tenth, the county commission vacated their original approval of the text amendment with direction to return the text amendment to the planning commission, um, for further review and consideration. Uh, the planning commission held another public hearing on February ninth. Um, they received written comments and verbal comments. Um, and they took, they closed the public hearing the same night, but they took two weeks to review all of the public comments and, and give everything consideration. Um, they met on the twenty-third of February, um, and determined that solar facilities as a principal permitted use were consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, and noted that if there were any conflicts with the plan, there had been changes of a social nature which, um, support, uh, alternative energy. Um, the planning commission then directed legal counsel to draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, which were provided to them at their March meeting. So on March ninth, the planning commission made a formal recommendation to the county commission that the draft amendment was consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the findings of fact and conclusions of law are in the commission's packet. Um, so the recommendation to you, uh, today, it's, the text is in your packet. I'm happy to provide an overview if you would like that. I, I know you guys are, um, moving right along, so I don't want to hold up time if you're not interested in reviewing it, but let me know what you would like from, from that perspective.
So we, I, I guess my standpoint is that we're obviously want to hold another public hearing at the county commission. I'd like to hold that hearing April first. I don't want to, I want that one on the April first meeting, in the in-person meeting. Uh, and we have to have a discussion as to if we're gonna start letting residents back in these meetings. The governor has now opened up a large swath of the state, and I know Parks and Rec can now oper, operate at a hundred percent capacity. So the county commission should start operating at a hundred percent capacity with still maintaining social distancing, which Parks and Rec can do. So I think it's time we, we open the doors again and follow the governor's lead on this. But I mean, what, is everybody okay holding a public hearing at the April first meeting for this?
Well, can I chime in? I'm sorry. And, and maybe, uh, Nathan or Stephanie can correct me, but I don't know that it'll meet the legal advertising requirements. Um, I, I believe the ad has to be run fifteen days prior to a hearing. And so the earliest we could get an ad in the paper would be for the twenty, uh, April, excuse me, March twenty-fourth edition. Um, so I believe then the earliest you could do would be, um, I guess, the second week in April, maybe April eighth, if you call a special meeting.
Yeah, and Commissioner Compton, I would also point out that, uh, we do have the, um, the decommissioning policy that we would bring to the commission, uh, at the April first meeting. So it would probably go, uh, well to, uh, have your public hearing and further action on the ordinance, uh, sometimes subsequent to that, so that way everyone can see the bonding policy and all that. I would hasten to say the bonding policy is not an ordinance. It's something, uh, it's, it's a policy of the commission, so we don't have to have the same, um, uh, the same level of hearings and review by the planning commission and all for the bonding policy as we did the ordinance. But still, um, you know, it would be just a, a good time for the commission to just review that briefly, uh, if the commission, uh, chose to put the hearing out just a little bit.
So what, what about the twelfth? Why don't we have a special meeting to address this, the twelfth? I mean, it can be virtual and just take input, because there's gonna be a lot of input in person. I mean, I, I anticipate a lot of input in public on this. So what about the twelfth? Can we do the twelfth, maybe, at like, uh, an evening on the twelfth? I think the ordinance for the ATV needs to be separate, and so does this.
Yeah, that's probably right.
Can we do six PM, the twelfth, April? Is that okay with everybody? Or do you want, you need a checker?
So Alex, did that give you enough time, then?
That gives me plenty of time. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were waiting on me. Yes, I can draft a legal ad and submit that to Jessica tomorrow, uh, no problem. And that can go in the spirit of Jefferson for the twenty-fourth edition, and that'll meet the legal advertising. Um, and six PM, you said it'll be a virtual meeting?
Yeah, because I feel like there's gonna be a lot of people that want to comment. I don't know how we'd accommodate them if it wasn't virtual.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Compton, I would also like to point out that when the ordinance was sent back to the planning commission from the county commission, the ordinance was vacated. And, uh, so any amendments or adjustments that the county commission made to this ordinance the first time through were done away with. So, um, I just wanted to let you know, there was a, a setback issue, if I recall, in the initial ordinance. And, uh, in my view, that is no longer, um, no longer, uh, attached to this ordinance.
Okay.
Can we, can we draft this as the ordinance, the ATV ordinance, where it's a meeting and a public hearing at the same day?
Um, sure.
Okay, so April twelfth, six PM for that. Anything else, Alex, or are you good there?
Uh, no, I'm fine unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Alex? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Does anybody have a break for a few minutes?
That would be nice, yes.
Let's take a eight-minute break and be back at seven thirty-five. Steve already got a break.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on a five-minute break.
We're moving pretty good tonight, though.
Yeah, we are.
Kayla, are you back?
You're like a race car driver on these things, Josh.
Hey, man, I, uh, there's no, I don't need to lollygag around certain issues right here. I know we all have time things, and I mean, if there's a discussion that needs to be had on a specific item, that's very important, we do it. Just, if it's a request for a grant, it is really not going to be much discussion here. It's, is Mr. Shore's back on? Or is he on, actually?
I still do not see him.
He's got five minutes still, so. Ms. Huddle, is she on?
She is not.
Okay. Everybody seems to be back. Let's, uh, let's jump to one, your, you want to continue your updates in the Charlestown Library Streetscape design?
Sure. Do you want to go to that, or do you want me to finish my legislative updates? We have Roger on.
You can finish her.
Sorry.
Whatever you want to do.
City one, because I have Roger waiting. So he can get off of here when, when we finish this. So I did, I reached out to Roger to kind of coordinate. If you recall, the city of Charlestown is getting some grant funding to work on the stormwater problem on Liberty Street, and they'd like to do some of that project in our parking lot. And I reached out to Roger to ask him to coordinate with Greenway on this project, which he did, and he and our maintenance director, Laura Kuhn, met with Greenway, asked some questions. And Roger is here to answer any questions that you all may have. And I don't, Roger, did you want to go? I, I have your recommendation, but you're welcome to go ahead and, and say a little bit if you want to.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that the project's currently in the design phase, and that's what they need to get done by, I think it's June 1st, in order to meet the requirements of the grant. So they have grant money to do the design. There, it's not for construction at this point. Laura Kuhn, Director of the Maintenance Department, myself, planning and engineering staff, met with Randy Kepler at Greenway Engineering and Todd Wild at the city of Charlestown. We had a list of questions and concerns. They provided a written response. That should have been maybe in your packet. It all seemed satisfactory to us, and we did, we do not see any reason for cause or concern for the County Commission to give the go-ahead to let them move forward with the design phase based on the concept plan that they had shown us. One thing we did bring up was the Smoot Building. There's been discussion over the years of possibly demolishing that building. And the thought was, if you were going to ever demolish it, it probably would be a good idea to do it as part of the parking lot project, rather than come in later with equipment and on a new parking lot and try to do that. So we threw that out to them. They said it was possible to include it in the design plan, because the idea would be to turn it into green space, which is what they're trying to do here, reduce impervious area. So it could be part of that design. The issues could be, if they don't get enough construction funds for it, they might come back and ask the County Commission to fund that. My, my guess right now is, we've done demolition of some houses under property safety, but you're probably talking $25,000, $35,000 to get rid of it. If, if that's an issue and funding's an issue and you didn't want to do it, or you decide later you don't want to do it, they could just do a change order and a revision to the plans to remove it and take it out of the project. So we mentioned that to them, that they would do a design, they could do a design, make it, turning that into green space, and that we just need to know if that, if you want us to have them move in that direction, knowing that it could be changed later, depending on whether they're going to fund it or not.
What does everybody think? I mean, the Smoot Building is in pretty rough shape. I mean, I don't have a problem if we can find the money, or they find the money in the grant to get rid of that thing.
Yeah, I agree. There's, while, while we have equipment and on the parking lots, it might be a good time to go ahead and, and take it down, and we don't have to worry about a new company coming in there and destroying a, a new parking area that we're installing.
You're muted, Commissioner Tab.
Okay. Making it green space then leaves all our options open for the future. I mean, that's, you know, I think that's important. We don't know where we'll go as far as a, if we ever get to a new complex, but if it's just green space, that'll be good for the stormwater and be good to get that building down.
All right, guess, leave it in there, Roger, and we'll see where the money's coming from.
Okay.
All right, so do we, do we need a formal motion to approve that, or allow them to proceed, or?
I think they were just looking for a phone call to say that the County Commission's in agreement to, for them to go ahead and do the design phase, based on the concept plan that they had presented.
Yeah.
Okay. There's like, there's general consensus to allow them to proceed.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thanks a lot, Roger.
Thanks.
All right, Stephanie, you want to do your little remaining legislative updates?
Um, I did want to mention, and I think I called it SGR 9, it's actually SGR 7 this year, it's identical to SGR 9. It seeks to, it's the same bill last year that was trying to restructure the local property tax. And it's trying to exempt personal property tax, but it also allows the legislature some other controls over local revenues and the local property taxes, which they don't get any of, you all get it all. The commission, or not you all, but all of the local governments, so municipalities, counties. Last year, the commission opposed it based upon that, not that we, and I think that we've kind of all been in agreements that we need to do something about the personal property for businesses, because it's, I think it's generally regarded as a barrier to business in West Virginia. But this, this bill doesn't make up for the revenue shortfall that counties would experience, including Jefferson County. It does require, it, it is a constitutional amendment, so it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. And then it would also have to be approved by the voters. But once it is approved by the voters, it would, again, take some of your control over property taxes and move it to the state. I do have more information that I could email out to you if you want to, if you want to look at that. The, the CCAWV opposes it today. It went from the Judiciary, Senate Judiciary Committee, tomorrow it moves into the Senate Finance Committee. And then I think it's likely that it probably will move on to the Senate floor. It was defeated, obviously, last year, since it's up again this year. But again, my concerns are the reduction in property tax revenue. I think we ran those numbers last year, it was a pretty significant reduction. Last year, there was a, there was a mechanism to shift funding from the state into the county budgets. I don't know that that's been discussed this year. And also with the reduction of the income tax, there's still a shortfall based on that proposal as well. So I'm not sure where they would get additional funding to supplement the county budgets and municipal budgets as well. But I can send you more information on that. I can send you the letter that we drafted in opposition last year, if you're interested in seeing that.
Yeah. Just didn't see it.
That's me, too, if you don't mind, Stephanie, we get a chance.
I will also send it to you. And then there is a bill, I wrote that number down, somewhere, 2496, House Bill 2496. It's seeking to make some changes to the Board of Review and Equalization process. It lowers the burden that the property, that the taxpayer must meet. So right now, they have to prove their burden by clear and convincing evidence. It lowers it to the lowest evidentiary burden, which is by preponderance of the evidence, by preponderance of the evidence. I think the assessors are opposed to that, and I speak, spoke to our assessor, and she alerted me to this bill and the opposition to the, to the lower evidentiary standard for Board of Review. And I just wanted you to know, I still participate in the Monday COVID-19 Task Force calls with the mayors, and we also have some other community representatives on that. And it was brought to my attention that they received a letter concerning Mark train funding and that the state is not going to be making any more payments, the state of Maryland, as of March 31st of this year, because there is a $700,000 shortfall for that payment. We did not receive a letter, but all the municipalities did. So, yeah. So, and that's just from the state. I don't, we haven't heard from Mark yet, but I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with some, with, and I, I invited our local delegation, if they're available. I know they're very busy with the, with the legislature right now, but I invited them and also the reps from, our federal reps, because there was some discussion on the COVID-19 Task Force about really addressing this Mark issue so that it's not coming up year after year, and, you know, seeing if there are federal funds available to shore that up. I think one of the reasons for Mark is not just commuters, but we think that there's, when, when Hilltop opens, there's some untapped potential there for tourism and the Mark train to drop people off right in Harpers Ferry and have them just go up, you know, go to the Hilltop. And Annette Gavin is on that COVID-19 Task Force. So I am meeting tomorrow, just, it's just a preliminary meeting to just kind of discuss what our options are and actually try to see where that funding actually is, because the rumor is, is that the funding for Mark is in the budget for next year, but they don't have the money to pay it this year. So we're still trying to, like, shore up the details. But it, there was a letter sent out to the municipalities stating that the end of this month, they're not going to make any more payments to Mark. I'm not sure how Maryland will react to that news. Before, they said, you know, they were absolutely going to cut off the train service if they didn't get funding. So that is a new issue, which I became aware this week, and we're meeting tomorrow to try and begin to address that and see exactly where we are.
As, as powerful as Joe Manchin is right now in the Senate, you think he could help Peter Pan handle, get some train funding? I mean...
So, and I've been speaking with his representative at length. He is going to be on the call tomorrow. Senator Manchin is supportive of the train, and he also is a member of the Transportation Committee, so he has some pull. And we also spoke with, Mayor Oxer wanted to invite Matt Ward to our meetings, and he does a lot of outreach. And he said pretty much, you know, Manchin was probably your, your person, he's, he's pretty powerful in the Senate right now. So I have been meeting with his representative to discuss, you know, federal options for funding. And that's what I'm really looking for. I'm looking for not just like every year trying to, trying to, you know, scramble to find this funding, but a consistent source of funding that would ensure that Mark is going to be here so that every year, we're not having this discussion, or every two years, we're not having this discussion. So there apparently is an infrastructure bill that will be coming up through the leg, through the federal legislature, according to Keith McIntosh. Traditionally, that has not been for operational expenses, but I think there are people who want to expand the funding for operational expenses for public transit, and this would be one of those opportunities. So we have that kind of kickoff meeting tomorrow for Mr. McIntosh to kind of, you know, to get his input, to see what he's been able to find out about the funding and to see how we move forward, finding a permanent solution, so that, again, we're just not scrambling for funding every year, we're not having this discussion every year. And it seems like we are, you know, our budgets are already submitted, and then we get, you know, a letter saying, well, you need to come up with funding, and all the localities do, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a recurring theme, and we need to do something to, to shore it up. So that's what this meeting on Friday, and I'm sure I'll be reporting back to you, and we'll have many more meetings to discuss how to do this. But I just wanted to make you aware of the issue. Again, this is just a letter from the state, we haven't heard anything from Mark itself about the status of the train.
I mean, I mean, didn't you jump to the new tunnel for a train in, from New York to Canada or something in that bill? I mean, you think Senator Manchin could get even a little bit? I mean, I don't know what's going on down there, but it was that, it's just unacceptable. As much as we're growing out here and as much money as we pump into the state of West Virginia, it's just ridiculous.
Right.
That's hard.
There's some discussion that during the COVID pandemic, people aren't commuting, and that's true, but I don't think that you can, you can base anything off of this year. So I think there are people who are teleworking, but I think once things begin to open back up, you'll see people use the train more. So a lot of people aren't using it right now, but again, that's, I mean, that's just because of the circumstance we're in right now. I don't think that that trend will continue.
Yeah.
My personal, my, my, that's it.
All right, so let's jump back to item number seven. Is Mr. Shore's on by now?
I still do not see him, but I do see Kristi Huddle on.
Okay, let's jump to number eight, then. Kristi Huddle, Harpers Ferry Water Commission, request from Harpers Ferry Water Commission to place a temporary sign advertising the impending water treatment plant upgrade on the existing poles near the frontage of the Welcome Center on West Washington Street near Route 4340. Are you there, Ms. Huddle? Can you hear us, ma'am?
Ms. Huddle, it says that you're self-muted.
You hear us, Ms. Huddle?
Hey, I'm used to using Zoom, so I'm not, this is my first time on webinar. Yeah, yes, um, we have been making every attempt to try to get the word out to our 840-some customers, water service customers, about the upgrade to our plant, our, our water bills have already gone up. They had to go up two months before we closed on the project. And a lot of people apparently missed the five or six notices in the bills, and the five or six letter, newsletter articles, and the Facebook messages. So we were trying, we thought that putting a sign up, a four-by-eight sign on those poles that are already at the Welcome Center might get their attention. Mike, the, the wording will be, will be advertising, it'll be professionally made, and it will include the information on the project, the contractors, the consulting engineer, and, and most important, a website to go for more information, and the contact information for finding out more information. Do you have any questions?
How long do you anticipate these to be up?
As, as long as we're allowed to have it up, we anticipate the project to be done. But I think that once, if it's up for two, three months, they will go past it, they will see it. And then they will stop seeing it after a certain time, so I'm not interested in long-term.
Okay.
What does everybody think? I mean, I don't have a problem with that, it's no different than what Hillsborough did with their road project. They have that huge rethink Route Nine type deal right there, so.
Yeah, I just wonder if the CV for, it looks like it's, to me, that's just visually from the picture. It looks like it's far enough away from the front of the CVB not to provide any hindrance or, you know, lack of signage for them. So, but I don't know if they have plans for that, you know, putting up their own sign, I don't know.
I reached out.
I, I, I thought, I thought of that too, and I, are they even open yet?
They, they are, they are moved in, they just recently moved in, I'm on the CVB board, and they're slowly getting in there. I, I certainly don't have a problem with you guys putting a sign there with the discretion that we, you know, it's, as long as CBV doesn't need the poles, and as long as it's suitable for Mrs. Gavin, as long as she agrees, I, I certainly don't have a problem with y'all putting a sign there with, with those caveats, obviously.
I reached out to Annette, and she said that she did not have an issue with the sign, you know, she didn't want it to be used to make a habit of using it for, for, you know, for people putting signs there, but she did not object to this use.
Okay, makes it, makes it simple.
I'll make the motion, we approve the placement of a temporary sign on the existing poles next to the frontage of the Welcome Center on West Washington Street. That will inform the water customers in the service area of the impending improvements to the water treatment plants.
Okay.
A friendly amendment to limit the amount of time it can be posted to like three months?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, yeah, whatever.
Basically, three months, Commissioners, to offer.
Yeah, well. Yeah.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking from the time they get up, suddenly take it down, ninety days, that's just how it was worded by contracts, I'm sorry.
I'll accept the amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion further? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, I really appreciate this.
Thank you, Ms. Huddle, take care.
Thanks for all your hard work, Kristi.
Is, is Mr. Shore's on?
He is, and Mr. Shore's, it says that you're self-muted.
Are you there, Mr. Shore's?
There he is.
Okay.
How are you doing, sir?
See me and hear me. Sorry, I was on a iPhone before, and that was not compatible, so I've, I've switched over. So here I am, I'm sorry for the tardiness.
No problem. So, want to tell us a little bit about what this request is? Request for approval of the West Virginia ABC Beer and Wine License? You want a letter from the County Commission supporting that?
Yes, so because the Mountain Lake Club is not located in a municipality, the West Virginia ABC requires a letter from the commission saying that the property is, there is no zoning violations for the request. It's basically you just saying that, based on the zoning requirement of, or the zoning regulation in that area, that we're not in violation of that per our request. And I'm comfortable with the fact that the request I'm making is, is adequate, because the previous owner had a beer and wine license, which is exactly the same thing we are requesting for, for many, many years. The only reason we were not allowed to transfer her license is because she failed to make the renewal payment back in late June or July. We purchased in December, and West Virginia ABC is basically saying, no renewal, no license, you have to start from scratch. So the completed package is in your agenda, we are bonded now with your letter and some fingerprints, we'll mail our application to West Virginia ABC, and keep our fingers crossed that they will approve the application as submitted.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Shore's?
No, I'm ready to move a motion there, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
I've had it, Mr. Commissioner Stoller.
I move, I move that we write a letter in support for the request approval for West Virginia ABC license, and have our President Chairman sign it.
I'll, I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously, good luck, Mr. Shore's, I'm sure we'll, I'll be down there at some point once you're up and running.
Absolutely, love to host you, once COVID slows down, and you can have a meeting there, and maybe enjoy a beer or some wine. Thank you so much, Commissioners, I appreciate your time.
I'll take care.
Yeah.
All right, it looks like we have exhausted everything except Mr. Cochran, and we're going to do a commission report real quick. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll just start, Solid Waste Authority doesn't have another meeting until next Monday, so I don't really have much there. Parks and Rec, some good news finally coming out of that. The governor has allowed them to open back to 100% capacity with still social distancing. Ironically, the family Easter egg, I think it's a roll, or I think it's the Easter egg roll, the family Easter egg roll, it serves past 200 people signing up for it, they've opened it up to 250 now. So, obviously, county residents are sick and tired of being cooped up in their house, and they're taking part in everything that's coming up. Even their programs are filling up, and they're opening different programs. So the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter and brighter by the day. So good things going on there, I know they're very appreciative of that money we gave them as a stopgap measure, it really helped. Other than that, that's all I really have to report as far as boards. Commissioner Tab, you want to go next?
Uh, yes, Eastern Panetral Transit Authority meeting, they are facing financial challenges with the loss of the Mark contract, and, you know, ridership being down and so forth. But we're working, working our way through those issues. Energy Express, which is a summer reading and nutrition program, has, I work with the Extension folks, and that has been awarded a site at North Jefferson that serves low-income areas. And it's also a feeding site, a summer feeding site, so that's exciting, it's going to be at North Jefferson, and it's an AmeriCorps-staffed project. So we're looking for high school seniors planning to go to college, anyone in college to apply. You get a stipend plus a education award. So I think that's, education award is $2,000 toward any tuition. So it's a fantastic opportunity for a young person to build their resume. So I've, I've managed sites before when I worked for Extension, and it is a great program. Also, Fireland Protection Board work carries on, and always, always interested in folks applying and asking lots of questions, so that's good. And we're also pleased with the increase in the transfer tax that we get a share of. And I don't attend everyone, but the COVID Monday, Wednesday, Friday Task Force phone calls are always informational, and I had an email from a citizen that her neighbors didn't have, you know, West Virginia driver's license yet, and they, they, you know, had just moved in, and they didn't know if they could get to, could be vaccinated or not, but I, I got the answers I needed, and so I was glad to help those citizens out too, so lots to keep us busy.
Ms. Jackson, Commissioner Jackson, would you look there?
Yeah, so JCE SA met last Tuesday, or this past Tuesday. So there was a motion, there was a civil action, 17C 174. There was a motion to set, to direct the attorney to settle that, our outside counsel to settle that, so I'll have more details on that. But the board voted for a settlement with that civil action. Also, I took the directive back to the board in light of ESA asking for seven personnel, and we gave them three, that they start assigning personnel according to call volume and demand, obviously. So the board did vote that they will start redoing the, assigning according to need and, and the call volume throughout the, the county. So they did decide to do that, but that's all I have for ESA.
Thank you, ma'am, Commissioner Stoller?
Uh, yes, right now, the Development Authority, there's a lot of activity in the park. As you know, they closed on Sheets or, or Soon to Be, and there's a lot of call volume with our, with lots in the park. Right now, we're, we're seeing a flurry of inquiries, which is great. As far as the CBD board I'm on, like I said, they're getting ready to move into the visitor center. I've only seen pictures, it, the pictures that I saw, they were absolutely beautiful, they're excited to be there. What we're hearing from the tourist industry is, folks are getting their shots, and they're starting to come out from hibernation. So they're, they're excited, a lot, a lot of our tourism, uh, uh, business partners in, in the county are very excited right now. Planning Commission, most, anything important kind of ends up on our desk, but it's same old, same old, it's the Planning Commission, and a lot of stuff going on in Region Nine too. So that was a long meeting this week, just going, going over a lot of plans and, and proposals for various road projects and projects throughout the tri-county area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, nothing major, I had a CTUB meeting, they're doing a lot of upgrades, but rest of my meetings are towards the end of the month.
Okay, and just to note, tomorrow, the Health Department has a meeting at 9:00 AM, I'll be on that. I hope all the other Commissioners can attend if they're available. Until all this is sorted out, I think it's very beneficial for all County Commissioners to attend Health Department meetings. So that's all I have here. Ironically, it is now eight o'clock almost, and we are done with the agenda and at Nathan's 8:00 PM agenda items. So Nathan, this is on you, if we stay here past 10 o'clock, I, I've taken us to the place we need to be, so.
Yes, Commissioner Compton, you've done an exceptional job of, of keeping to the schedule, I will have to commend you for that. Let me, let me say that most of my items, I think, have executive session, a basis for executive session. I will point you to item number five, the Jefferson County Civil Action 2021 C22. I'm just making you aware of this particular lawsuit that was filed against the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm not exactly clear because of the, the way that it's styled, but I think possibly against IR zoning administrator as well. But it involves a complaint about a CUP that was issued to a, a company called Riverchase LLC to allow certain events to be held there. I'm just advising you of it because it is, you know, it's a lawsuit against the county entity, the BZA. Obviously, the folks who filed the lawsuit, who are mostly neighbors up there, I think, disagreed with the CUP decision. So that's a petition for writ of certiorari is what it really is, so we'll be dealing with that in Circuit Court.
Okay.
Beyond that, I think that the other items are issues that you need to receive some legal advice on. Item number one, I think there are legal issues there and potential for liability or litigation. Number two, the impact fees and proffers is another issue that is potentially an issue that would involve liability or litigation and attorney advice. Point three, our counsel on our opioid case is standing by to offer you some information and give you some legal advice on that case. And number four, the Greenway Contracted Zoning Reorganization issue is, again, a, a matter that could potentially have some litigation potential, and some legal advice is needed on that. So with regard to items one through four under my point nine, I would respectfully request that we move and go into executive session.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we go into executive session to seek legal advice for Agenda Item Nine, numbers one, two, three, and four as outlined on the agenda.
And.
Second.
Go ahead. I was just going to suggest, go ahead and do your vote, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oh, go ahead.
We're in executive session.
Josh, you have me so pumped up to go fast, that I just keep interrupting you.
Yeah, don't, don't go too fast, man.
Wait, is that you on a timer, Nathan?
So I would respectfully suggest that we deal with the issues in order, numerical order, under my.
Do we have to re-sign in another count?
Yeah, we have to jump to the next, yeah.
Okay, so we, we completely get out of this platform.
Yeah, so you have to like go out of this unless you have another machine.
No.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Kayla Vaughn? Kid, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
This is Tricia.
All right, Tricia, you're on too.
Yeah, I'm just on the phone.
All right. Let me know when you're ready, Stephanie.
We're ready.
All right, so I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we're in regular session. Is there anything that's coming for us?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I authorize you, the chairman, to sign the contract revision with Greenway Engineering.
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Is there any further business to come before us tonight? No, I don't think so. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? We're adjourned. I'll see you guys later. Thank you.
Good night.